Good afternoon. Calling the meeting of the Saint Simons Island Planning Commission meeting to order for Tuesday, October 15, 2019. Commissioner Kate will give the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, as we meet today to conduct matters of business, please guide our hearts and our minds in a spirit of fairness, right thought, and kind words. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that we may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being a source of guidance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to your blood, for which this stands, one nation, united in heaven, indivisible, and limited in its essence.
The Island Planning Commission considers applications for site plans and village preservation permits. In addition, the Island Planning Commission considers requests for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on site plans and village preservation permits, and then makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The Island Planning Commission allows public comments for site plans and village preservation permits. The Commission holds public hearings for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations, and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is responsible of the applicant to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings and public comments will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Under general business, take any approved amendments of the regular meeting held September 17, 2019, subject to any necessary corrections.
Mr. Chairman, on the top of page three of the minutes, the first paragraph, there's a comment that Mr. Duncan made during the meeting, and the word "impervious" is there. It should be "pervious." It's on the fourth line, the end of the fourth line.
Ms. Levin, you got that? Anything else? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Would that change?
Mr. Chairman, I saw those.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Absent.
Miss Kate abstains since she was absent. All right. First item on the agenda after this is the public hearing for change of zoning request. ZM 4134 Christian Renewal Church of Saint Simons Island rezoned. Consider request to rezone from one family residential, R12, to plan development to allow daycare and preschool in conjunction with the existing church use on the property. The 7.86 acre property is located at 6530 Frederica Road, Saint Simons Island, parcel number 04-08249, and currently zoned, R12. Christian Renewal Church of Saint Simons Island, owner and applicant. Right, Ms. Leaf?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this is ZM 4134, which is Christian Renewal Church of Saint Simons Island. The property is at 6530 Frederica Road on Saint Simons, and the zoning is currently R12, and they do have a special use permit for the church that's currently on the property. So this is the property here off of Frederica. So this is just past where the turnoff is for Fort Frederica, and there's, so just to the bottom of the screen is a church currently, that's Wesley United Methodist Church. They do have a daycare and preschool in that location as well. This is the subject property here, and then there is a Frederica Presbyterian Church on the other side of the property. So they are looking to rezone to plan development from their R12 zoning. They are looking to do a daycare and a preschool, in addition to the church that's currently on the property. And so this project came to our attention. They had asked to get a business license and get zoning authorization to apply for their state permitting to do the daycare and preschool, and so it came to our attention that although they have the special use permit from 1988 to allow a church on the property in the residential zone, they did not have a specific permission to do a preschool and daycare. So that is when they applied for the special use permit, and it's before you tonight. So their plan, and this is also on their website as well, they are planning to do a mother's morning out program for ages one and two years old, a two-year-old preschool, and a three- and four-year-old preschool as well. And they have submitted a plan development text that outlines the uses. So next door at Wesley United Methodist Church, since they also have a daycare and preschool, they also had rezoned to plan development in order to allow the different uses on that So the comprehensive plan, future land use map, does show this property is low-density residential, but if they had stayed the R12 zoning, churches are special uses, and so this is an ancillary use to the church. So this is their survey that they submitted for the property, showing the church location. And then just a few photos of the property. This is the existing church facility. At this time, they are not proposing any new buildings, any new development, and so there isn't a site plan or other information that would show new development, because that is not what they're proposing at this time. So everything would be contained within their existing facilities. They do currently have a playground on the property, and this shows that playground. There's also a basketball court, or hoop, I guess, and then there's also ample parking on the property, so here's some photos of the existing parking lot. And then there are a number of standards that are outlined in your staff report for your review, and then your, this is your Planning Commission action in accordance with Section 1106.1. And then these are your possible motions. So you can motion to recommend approval in accordance with the plan development text, and of course, this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. You can recommend approval with modifications, you can defer action to a future meeting, or you can move to recommend denial to the Board of Commissioners. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and my new representatives of Christian Renewal are here tonight as well, if you have any questions.
Would the applicant like to come forward? Come and state your name and who you represent?
I'm Mike Murray, pastor of Christian Renewal Church of Saint Simons.
Do you have any comments, or would you like, or any questions for the applicant?
We were not aware of the residential zoning when we applied for the daycare. We had gone through several recommendations by the county to have a daycare there, and so we were working with the county to do that, and the latter part of applying for the licenses was when we found out that it was needed to be rezoned for this purpose. The Wisp Church next door to us provides a daycare right now. The Rosetta News reported about a year ago that there's a shortage of daycare in our county, and there's a long waiting list next door of children needing a daycare, and we want to supply as much as we can, at least help with that waiting list at Wesley, to provide a good daycare facility there. So that's, we have no plans to build to the current structure. It is as it's been for many years.
Are you operating these services now?
No, we are not.
But your website's out there offering them?
The mother's morning out is a four-hour program, and there was not a, there was no requirement for a county license, is what we were told, nor a state license. So the state approved us to have a mother's morning out there for four hours per day. We were operating that in the last few years, but we've not done anything in the last two years. But we did pass it through the county, through Mr. Johnson at that time, and that's when we were informed that we could do the mother's morning out of four hours per day.
Well, your website offers the preschool services as well with, on a fee base, right?
Right. That's just planning. That's just planning forward, but as we receive calls, we let them know that we're not active at this point.
What's the size of your congregation?
About 100 people.
And the size of the church, the building itself?
We can hold 300 people in the sanctuary itself.
But I guess what I'm asking, what percentage of the church building is taken up by the sanctuary, and what percentage will be taken up by these facilities?
We have a children's wing, and the children's wing is where the daycare will be. It's maybe, maybe 20% of the property is, would be the children's wing.
Any other questions with the applicant? This is a public hearing, so we'll begin the public hearing now. If there's anybody who's opposed to this application, if you'll come forward, state Anybody want to speak in favor of this application? Come forward. Well, I see nobody wants to speak at all, Reverend, so that's usually a good thing.
Okay, good.
So the public hearing is closed at this time, so Commissioners? Don't all speak at once.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion, I'd like to just move to recommend the proposed zoning decision as presented, subject to the adopted PD text.
Is a motion or a second? Mr. Torres, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. The last time that I was sitting on this commission, it wasn't a standing ovation, but we got an applause is when Flash Foods was denied, so. Been a long time coming. All right. Public hearing, special use permit for SUP 4018 Captain's Bluff Special Use Permit. Consider a special use permit, SUP application to operate a wedding and event venue at 300 and 425 Stevens Road, Saint Simons Island, parcel number 04-01042. The 132.74 acre parcel is zoned forest agricultural and conservation preservation. A place of large public assembly event venue is a special use in the FA zoning district. Philip Allen, Captain's Bluff LLC, owner and applicant. Ms. Leaf?
Mr. Chairman, I'm standing accusing myself of my consideration. All right, thank you. This is SUP 4018, special use permit for Captain's Bluff, and this property is located at 300 and 425 Stevens Road. However, it's a very large property that has a couple different addresses on it, and really all the activity will be at the 300 Stevens Road address. And so it is a 132-plus acre property. There is quite a bit of marshland as well on the property, and it is split zoning. It's forest agricultural and conservation preservation. The upland area is forest agricultural zoning, and then the marshland area is considered the conservation/preservation zoning. So this is the property on the screen where the, so the yellow star is located. So really, this dark border is the entirety of the property, so you can see this kind of darker green area is the upland area, and then all of this is marsh, so FA zoning is in this darker green upland. And really where the star is located, that is where the 300 Stevens Road, where the activity is going to be taking place at the property. And so they're requesting a special use permit for a wedding and event venue. So the way our zoning code states in the FA zoning district is a place of public assembly is a special use at FA, so that is how we've been interpreting these kind of event venues, our place of public assembly. And so we've been requiring special use permits for uses such as this. So they have, so this came to our attention, kind of early part of this year, we had received some, it was anonymous complaint, but we'd received some information about some events going on on this property, and so our code enforcement did investigate, and we did determine that there had been events going on on this property that would trigger a permit. And so we did reach out to the owners of the properties, and we sent them a letter to let them know that it looks like they would need a special use permit to continue what they have been doing on the property. They were very quick to respond back to us and submit permit application, so they were responsive to that. We have been working with them over the last few months to get the application ready for this agenda, so. They are stating that they have about 200 guests would be the maximum for their events. They have not, they don't really want to give an absolute max number of how many events per year, but they've stated on average, they have about eight events per year, and that would be, on average, what they would continue to have. There is limited parking on the site, so the parking would be really just for event staff working the event, or if somebody has some disability or some limitations, they could park on-site, but it's very limited, and really all of the guests, they have said, would take a trolley or shuttle, they would park off-site, and then the shuttle or trolley would bring them into the property. And just a little bit more about what, really what they have on the property, and some of the Commissioners were able to go out to the property and do some site visits yesterday and today, but they have two residences that are on the property and have some photos to show you of the property as well, but they have been renting short-term rentals, and then, so most of the time, guests or bridal parties, families, be renting the residences as well as holding the event on the property. So this is a future land use map that will show that the property is considered coastal marshlands on the 2018 comp plan. And then here's some photos that do show the property. So there is gravel driveway access off of Stevens Road that comes into the property, and so this is really where the limitation of the parking would be, just really on this kind of looped gravel driveway. So this is kind of standing closer to the Frederica River and looking back into the property. So in this picture, you can see one of two of the short-term rental dwellings that are on the property. To the left, so this is the dwelling here, this is one of the rentals, and then to the left, a smaller structure right here is a bathroom facility. So they have, they do have bathrooms on-site. And then this lawn area is part of where they would have the event. So they do not propose to do any new structures or new permanent buildings on the property at this time, really with the events, so they take place in open air, or people bring in tents for the events. So this is just another view, standing on the property. This is the bathroom facility again, and then as you can see, the lawn area. Another photo of the lawn area where people would erect the tents or have the events. So these are from the Captain's Bluff dot com website, so they do have a website for the property, and so there's a couple, just nice aerial, or a nice aerial view of really what it would look like set up for an event. So from this view, this is the lawn area that you saw in the previous pictures, where somebody or party would set up in a tent for events, and then they do have a dock that goes out to the Frederica River. And then of note, there were some questions about, or some concerns about catering and, you know, where that would take place. The applicants have said typically caterers would set up a tent, you know, right in this area where they would cater from. The kitchen, there are kitchens in the two dwelling units, but they are not supposed to be used for any kind of commercial cooking, commercial kitchens. Our environmental health department has made that a condition, that they cannot use that for catering for events, because it is not a tourist accommodation, or doesn't qualify as a commercial kitchen. So there are some standards of evaluation that are in your staff report for this, and then these are your actions, and these are your possible motions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Now, the applicants are here as well. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions from staff?
I've got a few. Stephanie, on the plat that you showed, and they provided a sketch in their package, where's the line of demarcation between the CP and the FA? On their, on their sketch?
So, I'm not sure if it was real, if it was a line there.
It isn't identified.
Yeah, it was shown on this, yeah, on the screen, but the outline, we just followed that, but here, so the demarcation would be basically with upland and the marsh, and so really this kind of line following where.
So it doesn't extend any further than that?
It does not.
Okay. In the review history from the staff reviews, it says the applicant has applied for a septic permit, but there's two bathrooms there that already are operating and have been for quite some time. How did that happen?
So my understanding from environmental health is that the bathrooms were installed without getting a permit for those. So there was some work done on the property for those bathrooms that did not get the required permitting, so they are, you know, kind of going back and working with environmental health now to get the proper permitting. So they have arranged for septic inspections and well inspections, and I know there was someone out on the site a couple days ago to do that work, and they were supposed to come back today, but given the weather, I'm not sure if they were able to, the applicant may be able to give a better update on whether they were able to get out there today. But what I had done, if the Commission was comfortable, you know, suggested condition was to just ensure that all the environmental permitting was, you know, is done, and they meet all regulations, you know, or they would not be able to operate this facility, so, because they're actively working with the environmental health now to make sure they...
But they already have been operating the facility?
Correct, yes.
You did state that they are operating facilities now, because I'm curious as to why we did not wait until you receive the report from environmental health?
Yeah, and I've been talking with environmental health about this, and they had stated that they were actively working and trying to meet everything. I think if, just my opinion was if they had not made any steps towards that, and we were pretty far from knowing whether they would meet it or not, I would not have scheduled them for a meeting, but they are actively trying to achieve that. But that would be up to the Commission. If, as a Commission, you're not comfortable, you know, acting on this until that is done, I mean, that is definitely something within your purview. But I thought that having the condition, because there's a good chance they might be able to get that done before the Board of Commissioners meeting as well, because they're pretty close to that. But that's definitely up to you if you're not comfortable with that.
I was just curious of that. Also, I don't know whether, I have a few other questions. One, you stated that they would have a shuttle or trolley to transport the guests. Now, where, do you know where the pickup areas would be?
I think the applicant has indicated that typically the pickup areas are at a local church, so there are several churches, you know, within, within an easy drive, but they did not state specifically, you know, which churches have, they've made that arrangement with. So hopefully the applicant can address that a little more for you tonight.
Okay. Oh, one other question, too. The, there's a rental property has there on the premises. Will that be allowed, will renters be allowed to rent that building when there's a scheduled event going on?
I don't think so. My understanding is that it's kind of more of a package deal, that if you're, if you're having an event there, then you would be required to rent the facilities, but I'm not sure if they, I think they're, they may, you know, rent out one house by the same time, as long as those people knew there was going to be a, you know, a party going on that weekend. That might be a little bit of a conflict, but they, hopefully they can address that, whether they ever do that. But my understanding is it's typically you rent both of those dwelling units when you have the events there.
Any other questions, Commissioners, at this time? All right. Perhaps the applicants would like to come forward and answer any questions, and make any statements you like?
I'm Ben Allen. I'm Phil's son, the property owner. And to answer your question about the trolleys, it's usually up to them. There's two trolley companies that we use, Lighthouse Cap and Bunny at Saint Simons Trolleys. Normally, they work it out, and the few that I've seen, they work it out with the elementary school, which is right around the corner from us, Oglethorpe, or one of the churches, like she said, that is right around the corner from the house. Sometimes we may have where the whole wedding party's staying at the Hampton Inn or something like that, and they'll just pick them up from there. But normally, the guests work it out with the trolley, and the trolley company themselves have a drop-off or pickup site. And I just really wanted to kind of say that we're not changing anything that we've been doing. We've been, kind of been doing this for a little while, and we didn't know that we needed a permit, was really, we just, we started renting these things out, like Stephanie said, through Airbnb. People started renting them out and saying, well, could we have a wedding here? And we said, sure. And it just kind of started picking up from there, and we really didn't know that we were required to have this permit.
And Mr. Allen, one of the questions was regarding rental of both of the houses, whether they're ever rented separately aside from the events, if you could answer that?
That's right. We make it, there's no choice. You rent both of the houses for three nights when you rent the venue. So we don't have multiple events in a week. Really, if you want to rent our venue, you have to rent both the houses, and you have to rent them for three nights. So it's, nobody's going to want to rent that house if somebody's having a wedding over there, and we had to explain that to people, that you have to rent the two houses for three nights. It's just kind of our, our deal.
Have you guys had any noise complaints previously, Vince?
No.
Nope.
We have a caretaker that lives, there's only really one house that could be affected by noise really too badly, and they live on-site. It's a caretaker that works for us, so we don't allow fireworks, so if anything ever gets out of hand, somebody's lighting off fireworks, they're on it. They're going to be right there. Plus, my parents live right there on the other side, so we, we're all right there at the place. If anything gets out of line, we're right there on it.
Good, thank you.
I know Stephanie did state in your package, puts us off, that you said eight event a year. You really didn't mean to put that, did you?
That's about how many, that's about how many we have been doing.
Okay.
That's right. And we're not planning on increasing it. All we really want to do is just get permits, that is all. It's, the weddings are really a burden on us, and we're really just kind of doing it to cover our expenses for the property taxes, to be honest with you. If we could get by renting out these Airbnbs all year, and we could cover our property taxes, we would do it. We can. The weddings is the only way we can do it. We bought the property to keep developers from buying, so this is how we pay for our property taxes, is having a few weddings.
Now, the wedding party is totally responsible for, you know, the tents and everything...
That's right.
...everything involved with the wedding.
All we rent you is the house, and you can, and it's up to you to, but we have a list of stuff that we require. They need a wedding planner, they need a caterer. You're not just going to show up and say, well, my Aunt Cindy's going to plan the wedding, and Uncle's going to cook barbecue. You've got to do it right, and you've got to have a certified planner, you've got to have a caterer that's licensed for alcohol, you've got to have everything like that. alcohol, you've got to have everything like that.
How many sleeping rooms are in the two guest houses?
They're both three bedrooms and sleeping.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. This is a public hearing, so we'll call that an order now, and any of those who are opposed to this application, if you'll come forward, state your name. Remind you to have five minutes once you start.
Hi, I'm Richard Vandeveld. I live adjacent to the property, as do several others. First of all, I want to thank these people for being good neighbors and taking care of the property and in good shape. I do appreciate that. We purchased the property about eighteen and a half years ago, knowing that adjacent Tarz was forest agricultural, knowing there wouldn't be development unless there was a zoning change. Personally, that could affect our property values if the zoning change is there and things change. My concern with the zoning change is that special use goes with the property, not with the person. What's to say that in a year, things don't change? That someone decides to have more than eight events? There's nothing contractually limiting them to eight events a year, from what I can see. Nothing contractually from keeping them from not using a trolley, from using parking on site. There's enough land there. Right now, the, they're proposing using the facilities farther from the residential area, but there's nothing that I can see in this zoning use that would restrict it from moving closer. Not that I'm against having a good time, but honestly, we can hear the music. It's not contained in a closed building. It's in a tent, speakers outdoors, sound carries. It's not, so it's been a burden, but we can hear it, and it's our property. We don't get to enjoy it as we want to. We don't hear the birds, we hear the music. And that is our neighborhood, and it does affect us, and it does affect potentially our property values. Is there any way to make this restricted to one of the two parcels? Is there any way to restrict it to eight events or less? Now, I want to be a good neighbor. I want to work with these people, but I do have concerns about the future, as opposed to just today. Does this convey with the property, or with, or does the owner, does it end when the property's passed to somebody else? I don't know that. You've got to speak to that. How many, how many events have been on the property already improperly? Is there any restitution for that? Just curious. Is the septic they have suitable for 200 people or more? Is there any way to limit this to 200 people contractually? They're saying 200 people or less, but how does that get enforced, or can it be enforced? Does a special use permit limit that? So I have questions. And I don't think anybody's been able to answer them sufficiently. I do want to be a good neighbor. I do like my neighbors. I do appreciate their taking care of the property, and I hope that continues. So with that, I think I've said enough.
Thank you.
My name is Hugh Warke, I'm a resident of St. Simon's. I'd like to raise a number of concerns with the application. Number one, just by comparison and personal experience, Seapalm's Resort just underwent a major renovation. Our home is on the Eighteenth Fairway. We now look unobstructed into the clubhouse. They've had three events since the renovation, or it's essentially complete. And the band went from a background noise to almost in my backyard in noise level. So it does make a difference in noise. Not, I'm not saying Seapalm's has any application on this. I'm making an illustration to say noise containment, particularly in the cooler months, is not very effective on St. Simon's, okay? We also get in competition between Seapalm's and Village Creek, so we're confused at who's playing. Point is, noise is a concern. I understand some of this was brought to the, brought to the attention of the county authorities based on an anonymous complaint, so noise is a problem out there, regardless of what the applicant is saying, okay? Second issue is, if the, if the reason for doing this is to offset your expenses, taxes being the number one, okay? With the rate that St. Simon's property taxes are increasing, if you're going to pay your, pay your taxes based on this, your number of events are going to have to go up. It's just simple arithmetic, sorry. That's the way it goes, all right? So there's no restriction in that. I understand the good intentions, okay, in trying to preserve the land. So like to get some type of media, strike some type of medium. Last item I want to comment about a concern, aside from what's already taken place out there for sewage and non permitting. My recollection in the research I did for Forbes Farm is that once you step over into a commercial operation, that septic is not an acceptable alternative for sewage treatment. It has to be some advanced sewage treatment plant, or preferably connected to sewer. Understand the environmental now. Forbes Farm was approved over the objection of a number of folks that raised it, and county council made the determination that a predetermination at Forbes Farm carried over, which I believe was incorrect, but nevertheless, that's water over the dam. Sewage is a concern, the area is there, and for the most part, a, what I'll call a non-constant flow or slug flow, if you've got 200 people or 300 people, whatever your event is, on a sewage system, probably the most detrimental to a sewage system. Sewage works best when you have it, when it's sized properly, and you have a reasonably constant flow. If you have an event eight a year, and you have a relatively low flow, you don't have enough flow, and the eco balance within the septic system does not support that type of work. So while I understand it's expensive, normally you go to some type of packaged sewage treatment plant or whatever, and the consequences, given the location of where this, this property is in relation to the marsh, the consequences of a failed sewage system is of significant concern. So just ticking the box on sanitary systems here is not, is not appropriate, in my opinion. If you're going to let them go, you need to put, I believe you need to have some restrictions on that, that if you're going to cater, the caterer needs to come in self-contained, including the waste that they generate, okay? I can just see the guy can't use the kitchen, so you take the hose out into the backyard. Seen them do it, no offense, okay? They'll do the most expedient way, so if we put some, if you're going to go forward with it, the restrictions of that, plus the number of events a year, probably ought to be a condition of that in order to deal with that, and we need to do something on, well, they've offered to put speakers facing the marsh. That's great, that's a short-term piece, no cost, but noise abatement needs to be part of it. So there are ways to do that, that the entertainment providers should be able to deal with, but noise in the area, particularly when I believe you're going to see is, if you believe the economic report that the wedding business is booming or growing here, then I think you're going to see more than eight a year. God bless you if you can get the business, I appreciate that, but the probability of staying at eight for an extended period of time, I think is, is pretty low. I'm not saying you're misrepresented, that's what your history is, I'll take that at face value, but I think the probability of economic forces are going to drive you to more events as it, as it develops. Thank you for your comments. Your free time.
Earlier this evening, Jeff Kilgore, Rosewood, Georgia. Earlier this evening, I-
Excuse me, please state your name.
I did, Jeff Kilgore.
No, thank you.
Earlier this evening, I passed out some copies of an order from Judge Stephen Kelly. About seven or eight years ago, I worked for about a year with residents of East Beach to stop a party house, the Burton Party House, it's pretty famous, y'all may have heard of it. And there were a number of points in the judge's decision that are very key to what you're looking at tonight. This is a forest agriculture, it's not the R6 like East Beach was, however, you've still got single-family residential housing. And I think that as these applications become more numerous, and you consider granting these applications, it's a violation of the property owner's rights for everyone that surrounds the event venue. Now, I don't know these folks, they may be sterling people and well-intended, but you just can't continue to grant these special use permits without there being some effect. And I don't know where the staff starts when they evaluate these, though the code says that the application has to be complete when it's submitted at the intake desk. Now, that's with site plans, but I think that with something like this, with significant question with the septic tanks, that you have a huge burden that you can't overcome with this application. And so I would encourage you to look very hard at that. The need for revenue to pay the property taxes can be, or should be satisfied by the rental of the two houses. And if it can't be, then I respectfully submit they made a mistake when they made the purchase. You know, we talk about people who buy single-family homes, and there's a property next door that can be developed, and I've heard it stated here many times by members of this panel, that they should, the person who bought that property should have known it when they bought the property, and they took that risk when they bought it. I think the same thing's applicable here. The, all the stipulations that have been provided by the applicant, again, I don't know them, I don't have any basis for saying it's not true. However, as Mr. Vandeveld said, you have no way of enforcing the restrictions. And so if they park there, and the guests park there, or if they have 12 or 15 events a year, or any number of things happen, then that cow is out of the barn. And so I would encourage you to do something to limit what the options are for this applicant in the event that you decide to go forward with this application. I'm curious as to whether the applicant has paid bed tax. If the applicant was not in compliance with the permit for a load these many years, it may well be. I don't know if staff checks that or not. I think they should, because when an applicant comes to them, one of the first things, particularly with someone that's been in violation for a number of years, one of the first things you should do is look at compliance. So all in all, I respectfully suggest that you have no choice but to, at a minimum, defer this application. I would encourage you to reject the application on the basis that the proliferation of special use permits is not a good thing for St. Simon's. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Jacobs. My husband, Russell Jacobs. We are friends and neighbors of the Allens, and we own the former Eugenia Price estate that's contiguous to the property in question. It's about four and a half acres. On that property sits a historic home that was a replica of early colonial homes that was designed specifically by Eugenia Price and Joyce Blackburn. We chose to renovate and restore that home nine years ago, when it fell into foreclosure, and we bought it from the bank. The Allens are good neighbors, and they're good friends. However, our concern regards the future of this property. We share a property line with our neighbors, and while we have no concern with 300 being used just as they've described it, yes, we hear the bans, yes, we can tolerate the bans, no, we don't want a high-density neighborhood on that land, which they very easily could have put there, when they too bought their land out of foreclosure several years ago. However, the use of 425 being part of this contiguous rezoning request concerns us. It's, it's the, it's the land that we share, it's the land that the common shares, and we have spoken with the Allens and encouraged them to reconsider this united parcel and remove 425 from this request, and that would be our appeal to you, is that you consider encouraging them to do likewise. We love having them as a neighbor. We don't want high-density development. We can live with what they do right now, it's just what they say. It's, it's very minimal, but we are concerned about the future property and the future use of our property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live in St. Simon's. I am not as concerned about what the Allens are proposing as I am about the quality of the staff report. The first page with the background information gives us a lot of second-hand information. And reading the whole staff report, I get the impression that although you, the Planning Commission, have asked the staff not to recommend a motion, a specific motion, that the whole staff report is directed toward giving you an upbeat appraisal of what is proposed here. And I don't think it's as upbeat as, as it seems to be. I'm going to take one sentence out of the middle of the second paragraph in the background section. Due to the increase in requests, the applicants are requesting approval to operate an event venue on the property in addition to rental of the homes for short-term occupancy. So it's something, because we got requests. Well, I used to get requests from my students. I spent four years as a college professor. They were constantly requesting higher grades, or shorter classes, or shorter assignments. You don't have to go along with requests. Now, let's look at the, the things that are required under Section 904.3. About half of the staff comments are non-responsive to the requirement. For instance, the first requirement, the first thing that must be established is the effect the proposed activity will have on traffic flow along adjoining streets. If you read what the staff, the staff have reported or commented, they don't talk about the effect. They talk about something else. Item six, hours and manner of operation, they talk about the hours, but no mention of the manner. What is the manner of operation? Under number nine, compatibility with surroundings, land use, and the staff comment is, the surrounding area is residential or marsh open space. How or why is what is requested here compatible? And if you go to number, item number seven on page four, for zoning decision involving the grant of a special use or conditional use permit, which is what you're doing tonight, the Planning Commission shall include comments on those matters identified in Section 904.3 of the zoning ordinance. And the only comment there is, the criteria are included in the staff report. Yes, the criteria are included, but most of the staff comments are not responsive to those criteria. And the obligation is anew to go through the nine criteria and discuss them, and make comments according to what is in the ordinance here. Let's go on to the next group of criteria in conformance with Section 1103. Whether the decision will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development adjacent near my property. Read the staff, staff comment, it's non-responsive. The staff comment on page three for number two is not responsive. And I just love the staff comment for number three, on page three. Whether the property to be affected by the zoning decision has a reasonable economic uses currently zoned. And we're told, the zoning is remaining FA and CP, and the event venue would be allowed under a special use permit. The applicant states that the special use permit allows the property to sustain itself and remain largely conserved. and remain largely conserved. I have six seconds left. Property cannot sustain itself. Only human beings can do that. Thank you.
Anybody would like to speak?
I would like to address Jane Fraser. I would like to address my favorite topic, and that is property rights. I would like to know if Ms. Leaf spent as much time with the neighboring property owners who also had property rights as she did with the people who had been breaking the law for over a year. Again, it's wonderful to hear that they're good neighbors, but I'm just wondering why that hasn't been addressed, what the fines were for having a two-seater for 300-person wedding. That's just absolutely scary for the environment. I'm not sure why everybody in here isn't shocked. Thank you.
Anybody else opposed to this application? Anybody in favor of this application come up and speak? State your name.
Sorry, I'm not dressed for the occasion. I'm Pat Albo. I live on Broadway, and I hear music from Redfern Village all the time. That doesn't offend me. I think if you guys are going to make a decision about this proposal, I think you should go see the venue. It's very secluded, and I just hope that you make a good decision.
Vincent Albo, resident of St. Simon's, married to Pat there. I just want to say that we have contacted Captain's Bluff for a daughter's wedding coming up. Sympathize with the noise issues, but off the top of my head, two of the things they told us right up at, bans is over at 10 o'clock, so they're very conscious of that. And two, as a matter of the garbage and such, and I didn't realize about the sanitary facilities. But the other issue they addressed is catering. They have to take out every bit of garbage that they bring in. Very limited resources for waste management out there. So, just, the caterer has to take out all the garbage they bring in.
Would you like to speak in favor of this application? Would that applicant like to come up and address any of these issues?
I think Stephanie can answer Mr. Vanderveld and Jacob's concern about 300 and 425, and which one is actually being permitted eventually.
Go ahead. Any questions for the applicant?
Sure. If the applicant can please. There's been a few comments about possibly restricting the usage. Are these things you're willing to go along with?
Yes.
Restricted to eight, something I heard earlier. Never have event parking? Because I think these are factors that are worth considering if we...
Now, Scott Glover with the Environmental Health has told us that our septic was good for 200 people, so that's where we put our limit out, was at 200.
Right.
We've never had 300.
I've got a question for staff on the issue of sewage. I remember long discussions about Forbes Farm, and it was raised earlier. But I also understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Forbes Farm has now decided to connect to the public sewer. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. Forbes Farm is now connecting to, yeah, to public water and sewer.
But before they came to that decision, they hired a civil engineer, did perk tests. It was pretty extensive due diligence that we required them to go through. And so I'm a little bit concerned. A comment was made about perhaps not enough probing has been done on this one issue, so I think it's worth more consideration. But I commend the owners, and there have been some neighbors that have complimented the owners for property management and that sort of thing. That's good. And I'm surprised there aren't other neighbors here complaining. I know some folks that live on Stevens Road, and I haven't heard from them. You mentioned the concern about your tax burden. Have you considered putting the upland property into conservation?
We've considered it, yes.
Yeah. That would kind of solve that problem, right?
Yeah. We don't want to tie our hands up, though, is the only thing.
And then that goes back to the usage issue, staying with the title and not the current So I am also concerned about the future use. Sounds like you guys are great owners, current owners.
Thank you.
And I would like to hear, perhaps, if we propose to approve this, some real clear restrictions. I don't know. Thank you.
I've got a question for staff. Can you tell me how large the FA area is in acreage?
Yeah, let me, I think we've got that on the survey. Let's see. Put that on this. Sorry. Do I have the survey on here? Sorry, I do not have the survey on here. Is it, does it show on there it's 18?
I'm just wondering, I know FA, you can build two single-family residences per acre, so that's potentially 36 homes without any rezoning at all, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you said a half acre? Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
36 homes could be there without any rezoning whatsoever. And the property taxes are just under $2 million, I mean, the property values just under $2 million. So, it's $20,000 a year in taxes they're paying. So, at eight events a year, it's $2,500 per event to cover their taxes, but I think they could probably do that with eight events a year. And this, in reference to the East Beach case that Mr. Kilgore brought up, if they would have had a special use permit, would they have been allowed to have weddings there?
Commissioner Torres, so the property in question in that case was zoned R6. There was no possibility for a special use permit or anything like that for an event venue for an R6. It is a possibility for this zoning.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Two points. One, even though they were hosting events there prior to knowing that they had to have a commit, whatever, would there be any type of penalty or any back taxes that would be due first? And then, secondly, as far as the restrictions we were talking about, could those restrictions be in writing, whether they, okay, we'll do it?
It could be part of the conditions.
Yeah.
The conditions.
Those are good questions. So, yeah, the first one, in terms of the conditions, absolutely. That, and we've done special use permits and conditional use permits that have, you know, 10, 12 conditions on them, so you can definitely add, you know, whatever you're comfortable with, as well as, you know, what the applicant is able to adhere to. So, absolutely, you can add whatever conditions to that. In terms of whether there'd be any penalties, you know, they've, it sounds like it's been about maybe a year that they've been doing some events. You know, we heard about it kind of early part of this year. We had not taken any code enforcement action specifically in terms of any kind of fines or notice of violation, because we did send them an initial letter saying, you know, here's an opportunity to apply for the permitting, because it sounds like you're having some events. And they did respond to that. So, we have not taken any code enforcement action, because they are trying to remedy their issue by applying and going through this process. So, that is currently our stance. We have not discussed code enforcement action. There is, you know, as we discussed, the bathroom facility on the property, you know, was constructed without a building permit and going through the proper permitting channels. I would need to discuss that with our, you know, building division staff, whether there would be any kind of ramifications or penalties for that. So, I would need to follow up with them on, in that regard.
I'll just make one more comment. There was a question about the bed tax. Yes, we do charge and pay the bed tax on all of our events. We make everybody pay it. If you're staying the night, then we charge the bed tax and we pay it.
Stephanie, two questions, and I think you've answered one. With the condition, it could, the permit could stay with the owner, the current owner? It could, we can make the condition?
No. So, the ordinance does require that the, that the permit, I mean, it runs with the land, and, I mean, welcome, correct me if I'm wrong. So, but they are limited to exactly what this permit is. So, if they do sell it, the new owner would have to adhere to all of the conditions and do exactly what is permitted. So, there, you know, there is the conceptual site plan that's in your packet, or the sketch plan. And so that does show that the activities around, you know, 300 Stevens Roads, that was a concern that some folks had. So, that would be the limitation. Anything, if they wanted to expand the use or expand to other parts of the property, and in our view, that would require them coming back before this body, as well as before the commissioners, to amend their special use permit.
And I know the applicant stated that Scott Gober came out and gave approval. I know yesterday at the site visit, we had not, we, you guys had not yet heard from him. But do we have a report back from Environmental Health?
So, basically, there was, so our contact with Environmental Health has said that they still needed to do some inspections. So, there was, I believe, a different individual that was coming out to actually do the inspections. So, actually, if the applicant, if there's been any update, if someone was able to come out today, because I know they were trying to...
Yeah. The guy that was going to come out and do the work that Scott had recommended, he was going to come out today, but because of the weather, he couldn't get it done. So, Scott has, I guess he signed off unconditionally that we still have to do that work. Is that right, Stephanie?
So, their comments, the comments from Environmental Health, so they did compliant with, basically with comments. So, what they have said, that Environmental Health will analyze well water for total and fecal coliform, and the well will be approved, no indicators of contamination are present. And then the other one is, once the requested soil work is received from the soil scientist, a septic permit will be issued. So, that is still the stuff that the, it sounds like the soil scientists that would need to finish their work. And then, once Environmental Health is able to review that, they can issue the permit if it meets their criteria. So, that's still, that's still a step that needs to happen, that couldn't happen today because of the weather.
And if it does not happen?
So, if it does not, so if that, I mean, if the board goes forward with a recommendation tonight, and that is a condition of approval, that would need to happen before they could, you know, operate on the property and have additional events. So, it sounds like the timing, I mean, the board commissioners, if there is an action tonight, would most likely see this application early in November. So, it seems quite likely they'd be able to have all those steps met before the board commissioners, you know, makes a decision on the application. And if not, then they will not be able to operate.
Let me ask Mr. Allen to, a question about, if you address 300 and 425, can you clear that up about?
The property is, it's one big tract of land, and it's considered three, there's two addresses, 300 and 425. 300 is the stretch, is the stretch along the river where it's at. If you come to the end, you guys that made the site visit will know what I'm talking about. When you come to the very end of Stevens Road, if you make a left, it's 300, if you make a left, it's 425 is back where the Jacob's property is. And that's the property that backs up to the Commons and backs up to the Jacob's property.
Is that across the road, basically, on the east side of Stevens?
It is, it is, it is. And so, we filled out the application for 300 only for the events permit, and there's been some question about 425, because it backs up to the Commons neighborhood as well as the Jacob's property. And Stephanie told me in an email that our permit is for 300 only. And if we wanted to include 425 in the permit, we would have to go back through this whole process again.
Well, Stephanie, can you clear that up?
Yeah, just to add to what Mr. Allen said, because it is such a large parcel, and there, you know, there's a lot of, there's older dwellings on it, so we sometimes see this on larger parcels, that there's several, you know, buildings or structures on the property that have separate addresses. So, that is the situation here. So, the sketch plan that they have submitted, you know, only shows the activity around 300. So, they would be limited to, you know, what is shown on their plan for where the activity is congregating. If they did want to separate the properties so that 425 and 300 are separate, in our subdivision regulations, if you're separating, if you create a parcel that's three acre, or over three acres in size, I mean, that is a survey that is exempt, and is exempt from our subdivision regulations. So, I don't know if they have enough, I mean, they have a lot of land, but I'm not sure how it's broken up, but it looks like they could most likely have a three-acre parcel or greater around 425, if that is what they wanted to do. So, that, I mean, that is one avenue for them. But I feel, you know, based on what they've shown on their plan, you know, it is segregated to that 300 Stevens. And that could be, if you feel more comfortable that it's, you know, in wards in the condition, you know, that's something that could be added to.
Well, that could be part of the conditions, if it's defined at 300. And that would, I think, satisfy some neighbors down the road, Jacob's, and maybe even the Commons, I'm not sure, but, yeah, it was kind of confusing there. So, it should, basically, what...
Yeah. And the letter that went out said that we're proposing an event venue at 300 and 425, so you can see what people's concerns were, when that 425 backs up to a lot of residential area over there.
Well, it clearly states on our application, on your application and our staff report, that the applicant's requesting a special use permit to operate a wedding and event venue at 300 and 425 Stevens Road. Then, in the review history, there, you know, the different departments are responding to both addresses. For example, GIS says current addresses of buildings on the property are 300 and 425 Stevens Road. So, that's where, I mean, it clearly states to us, which is why a lot of people probably think that, because that's what it says. So, I don't know where, I mean, how, it says that, so how do we, you know?
Mr. Chair, can I just get a point of clarification? Is 300 and 425 mailing addresses, or are they separate tax parcels?
So, they are mailing addresses. So, they are the addresses for those particular structures. So, there's a barn, there's no dwelling unit, correct? There's a barn at 425.
That's right.
Yeah.
Sorry. There's only one land title, correct?
That's right.
Correct, and one parcel number.
And so, we can't give a partial special use permit, this is not a zoning change, by the way. We can't give a, or approve a sub for part of the property. It does have to be subdivided. Is that, was that your point earlier?
So, my, I guess my opinion is that because their plan shows that the only event venue activity, you know, it shows where it's going to be, and it shows that it's going to be at 300 Stevens Road. There's no, you know, aside from, you know, sharing and access into the parcel, there's no activity that's going, to be going on around the horse stable at 425 Stevens. So, in my opinion, you know, their permit is specific to where they're showing their activity is going to be. I do not feel like they need to subdivide in order to have that happen. I mean, the permit will still be for this entire parcel, which happens to have two addresses. So, it is confusing. So, that's my opinion. However, an option could be if, you know, if applicants choose to go this route, you know, they could divide the parcels so that each address has their own, their own parcel, and we're not in the situation of two addresses for one parcel.
I'm sorry, Stephanie. So, the restrictions that we're considering could apply to the, back of a better description, 300 address.
Correct. Yes.
Will, are you comfortable with that?
I think if you're trying to limit it to a certain part of the property, I think a sketch or a survey or something like that is a better mechanism for that than an address. Addresses change. You know, GIS can go in and change an address based on different conditions. My home address changed at some point. And I think it also limits confusion as to, you know, where exactly it's supposed to be. But if it's limiting it to a certain part of the property, then I think a sketch or something like that is probably better from an enforcement standpoint.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be pedantic about this, but given that the permit is for usage to the title, and we're talking about potential restrictions, then let's be clear.
And the restrictions go with the property. Future owners would have to conform to whatever restrictions are on it.
We don't have any plans on selling it.
I know, I know. I mean, there's some fear that somebody's going to sell it and buy it and build condos, and nobody wants that.
No.
Stephanie, I'd like to go all the way back to the beginning. In your analysis of how this qualifies for a special use permit in the first place, I think you described it as a public venue. To me, a public venue is something that's open to the public, not something that's used for private events. How does it fit under the special use permit allowable under this, under FA?
So the way that the FA, the Forest Agricultural Zoning District reads, so there are permitted uses that do allow, you know, gathering of certain types. So FA allows camps, social clubs, and nonprofit use. And so, you know, you may see, I mean, and you do see, you know, around the county, I mean, like the Boy Scout camp on Blythe Island's example, you know, that's a camp that's owned, you know, FA. And so that, so basically, if it's nonprofit or if it's, you know, private use that, you know, the Allens only have this for their own family gatherings, you know, they have a family reunion every year, they use it for their own private parties, then they could outright do that. But because they are inviting the public to rent the facility and have events that are not private, that are not a non-for-profit, that is where it makes the move, you know, in our interpretation, into this place of public assembly and event venue. And that's when it requires a special use. So that is the difference that we look at.
Any other questions? Mr. Allen, I think, a lot of questions raised about restrictions. Are you willing to put a number of events per year?
We are.
And what number would that be?
I would say it'd be a little more than eight.
Well, we have a lot of family reunions there.
What is, what is...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
What is considered an event? Now, sometimes we'll have people rent both the houses, and they may have 15 people have a wedding. Is that an event?
I think it probably would be, yeah. Doesn't matter, I don't know if there's a numerical number on that, is there?
There isn't. So really, it just kind of, it really gets back to who, who's really the one having these events. So, you know, if you have, so if the Allens, you know, lived in this, in this home, and they, you know, had 15 people come for a family wedding, or, you know, they're living there and they're having, you know, a party for friends, then, then no, that would not be a special use permit, it would not really be considered an event venue in our interpretation. But the fact that they are, you know, renting the property to somebody who's paying them to have this event there, regardless of how many people are there, that would be an event in my opinion.
If you rent the house, though, for a week, a family, would that be an event? I wouldn't consider that an event.
Yes, Airbnb or events?
So, I mean, and probably a lot of you know, I mean, the county is working on short-term rental regulations right now. But if they are just renting the house, or, you know, if they're renting the two houses, I mean, right now, I mean, that is, that is allowed in terms of zoning to do short-term rentals. So that would not be an event in itself. But if they are renting the homes, and then they have 15, 20 people that are guests coming into the property, I would call that an event.
So our answer is, yes, we're willing to put a number on it, but we'd like to have it clear a little bit more on what is considered an event and what's not. Because we really do have people come, and they'll rent both of the houses, and then they have a birthday party or something out back. And it's, if they rent the house for a week...
But they're not having it catered or anything?
No.
Buy a pizza delivered?
They might go pick up Southern Soul, is usually what they do.
I wouldn't consider that an event.
I wouldn't either.
You know, I think if you have a catering event, like what we've talked about with the band and all that, that certainly would be an event, but...
I agree.
Can I, maybe I, just one quick thing?
Come on up. You're part of the applicant, aren't you?
I am. I'm Lauren Allen. I do all the weddings and events for Captain's Bluff. And we are very particular in how we allow people to have events. We manage them very well. And if you'll see in the application, there's a little map that we did for y'all that shows where everything is set up. That's how it is. If you're coming to Captain's Bluff, you're going to put the tent right where it says it is. There's no parking, the driveway has to stay open for, you know, trolleys and whatnot. So we are very, you know, strict, if you will, in how weddings are performed at our venue, because we are very, you know, concerned for our neighbors and whatnot as well. But I just wanted to add that in.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may comment on this issue of definition of what's an event. And I, I'm sympathetic to the owner and applicant. They don't want to paint themselves into a corner, because then that would just defeat the whole purpose, presumably. And yet, we want to be sure we protect the future use. Would it be possible that the applicant come back to us and repropose how many events you would like to have? Be in specific. Tell us where these cars are being parked. I understand it's up to the trolley company, but I have to push back on you, you need to know that. And it's not complex. Make that part of your proposal. We can come up with some arbitrary restrictions tonight. You may not like them. And so then I would prefer you come back with, you know, a little more, we'll call it flexibility, but what you're willing to live with.
And on top of that, if I may, Patrick, that would also give time for the Environmental Health review to come back, because I do feel like that's our job, and it's very important, and it should be part of the report for us to know what that report says. And I know, unfortunately, the rain today held them off. But I feel like part of our job is to see that before we, I mean, Will, before we approve things, I mean, in the best interest of everybody surrounding.
Right. I mean, one of y'all's decisions tonight is whether you feel like you've provided enough information to make a decision.
Can y'all wait a month?
We can.
I hope your daughter's wedding's not next week.
I'd like to make one more comment if I can. Reading through this Judge Kelly's order based on this, on this East Beach property, it does say that a property owner has the right to host parties and weddings attended by a large number of family and friends, and the court will not interfere with that right. Nor will it interfere with the property owner's right to rent his or her property to persons who might engage in those activities on incidental basis. So he's saying that it's okay to do it once in a while, it's not doing it every weekend.
Yeah. Stephanie, it also may just be, you know, poorly worded, not intentional, but when I read the comment from Environmental Health, and it says, "Once the requested soil work is received, a septic permit will be issued," it presumes that the perk test is going to be successful. It doesn't even allow for the fact that it may not. I mean, that, the perk test is going to determine whether they can have a septic system that'll accommodate 200 people or not.
Well, they've got 18 acres to put that septic, make that septic work. And I know there's a lot of R6 houses on this island that have septic systems that work fine. So I'm not concerned about the septic, because I think there's plenty of land out there if you even have to extend field lines. So, but I think the report will come back good. But I think Commissioner Duncan has made a good point, if maybe perhaps go back with some specifics. We don't want to arbitrarily tell you how many you can do and not do. That's not fair to you. You only know that, so...
Does I need to make a motion to defer?
I think we'll entertain that at this time.
Does a motion to defer?
To, to the next, what is that date, Stephanie? Week before Thanksgiving, is it?
November 18.
This is, you know, this is just, whatever we decide in November, it's just a recommendation to the board of commissioners. So whatever we decide, you could, you know, it'll go to them to make the final decision.
Okay.
But the deferral is usually no issue. So is there a second to the deferral? Ms. Rooks, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Maybe we can get this resolved next month.
Okay.
Right. Remind you that November the 4th, is it at 5:00 or 5:30, the joint work session?
It is at 5:30.
5:30 at the Brunson Library to hear comments from the public on the Envision Glen process. So the rules on that is that each, a speaker can speak for five minutes, but they can only speak one time. So hopefully, we'll have some good comments that will come out, and we won't be there all night long. So put that down on your calendar. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you.